Are you driving in the living room yet, Jeff?
Start recording.
I started driving, yeah, Monday.
Yeah.
Yep, that's why I got antibiotics drops.
Yeah, my dad had his important surgery and it like one of the screws, you know, it's fixed or whatever.
Huh?
It abscessed.
See if I can remember this password.
Yeah, when I have to, when you want, I just don't want to.
Oh, did you ever kind of have a mask on?
I'm saving them.
Cap on and a gown and gloves.
Ready?
Yep.
Yep. Almost six. Six o'clock.
I'm ready.
All right, let's call the village board meeting in order. Everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance at a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Local meeting law compliance.
President Jeff Malins.
Here.
Trustee Jay Peckah.
Yep.
Trustee Gary Finch.
Here.
Trustee Jared Newman.
Here.
Trustee Jim Hurt.
Here.
Mr. President, you do have a form of your village board and note for the record, you are in full compliance with the open meeting law.
All right, like to announce the possibly closed session, consideration and possible action on a motion to convene into executive session under Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five, parentheses one, parentheses G, for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is running oral written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it may be involved or may not. Specifically concerning code enforcement proceedings involving the Greenmeyer property located at South eighty-seven West two-three-three-seven-five Edgewood Avenue and consideration and possible action on a motion to convene into executive session under Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five, parentheses one, parentheses D, except as provided in section three oh four point zero six, parentheses E, parentheses EG, and ruled promulgated under section three oh four point zero six, parentheses one, sub parentheses EM, considering specific applications of probation, extended supervision or parole, or considering strategy for crime detection or prevention, more specifically considering strategy for crime protection and prevention of village facilities. Including the closed session will be the village board, village building inspector, village attorney, and village administrator clerk. This will require a roll call vote and no discussion or no action will be taken in the closed session. Public comments, are there any public comments? Hearing none, move on to miscellaneous matters. Resolution two thousand twenty-five dash zero four dash A, resolution to amend the schedule of deposits for the Village of Vernon Municipal Code.
Mr. President, Jeopardy Joe Hosh is busy with a call right now. Could we move on with the agenda and call on Joe when he comes? So the guys can speak with him about the bond schedule? Is that all right, Mr. President?
That is fine. Plan Commission recommendations approve the site plan, plan of operation for Darius Schwartz of Old Fashioned Roofing located at South ninety-two West two-seven-eight-two-five National Avenue, VNT number two-zero-nine-one-point-nine-nine-four. That was in Plan Commission last week. They made a motion to recommend improvement to the village board. You guys have any further questions on it or discussion concerns?
The plan comments were in their packet and so were the draft minutes.
You need a motion?
Motion, yeah, to concur with Plan Commission as stated.
Yeah. I'll make the motion to approve the site plan, plan of operations for the Plan Commission. I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Aye. Opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations, well done.
All right, Peddler's Permit Application for Renewal by Anderson to Sell Windows and Approval of Peddlers, Jordan Mueller, John Whacker, Adrian Pardalata, Perdosa, and Monica Weiner.
And Jordan is here just in case you have any questions as policy, if there's anything on the report, even if it's minor, we always bring that person in for the board if you have any questions. Jordan did appear if you'd like him to come forward or is there any board member?
That was a misdemeanor from almost twenty years ago.
Have you been underage drinking, is that what it was?
Yep, everything that you did when you-
I've forgotten, I've absolutely forgotten about that. Don't think that should be a problem anymore in my life.
They're old, I mean, the citations are old, but-
Yeah, I think it was two thousand seven or something, so it was quite old.
Well, I'll be on the twenty-one schedule.
All right, is there a motion to approve the pedal permits for the four people I mentioned, Jordan Mueller, John Whacker, Adrian Pardalata, Perdosa, and Monica Weiner?
I'll make the motion, I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Aye. Opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Jordan, are you going to see your colleagues?
Uh, tomorrow, yes.
Can I give these to you and then you guys can, you can start? And just so you know, these are going to be on the website and our residents are very used to-
I move, I just wear it like this.
Yes, and so make sure you wear them because there's-
Okay.
And you know, if somebody said posted no trespassing, you know not to go there, right, you?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
No trespassing, private properties, no solicitors, all that, yeah.
Right.
Okay, any questions you guys want from me?
That's it, Jordan.
Appreciate your time, thank you.
Thanks.
I would have a good day. Partial release of access and drainage easement to the property owned by John Miller to amend document number three-nine-two-five-eight-five-six and three-nine-two-five-eight-five-seven, CSM one-zero-nine-seven-nine and authorize village president to sign partial release easement.
Mr. President, this has been reviewed by Waukesha County by Sean Malarkey, our planning and zoning administrator, Vince Woodyack, our building inspector, and the village attorney. It is ready for your approval and for authorization for Jeff to sign if you so choose.
I noticed in our packet attorney had a few comments. Do we make changes of that or is that just for future reference?
Yeah, he said it was ready to go, but if you wanted to look at it once again, which doesn't make any sense because they reviewed it.
The county approved it, yeah.
And Sean, I mean, Sean's really up on our, also is the county on the zoning and shoreline and environmental borders. It's already.
I'll make the motion for partial release of access to the property owned by John Miller and authorize the village president to sign the release agreement.
There is second?
Okay, I'll make it.
I'm so sorry, just wanted to double check, were these your easements? They were going to look at you saying, I'm assuming they involve any of us.
Thank you, George.
You are.
Have a good night.
You are.
All right, the motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Aye. Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Waukesha County Data Processing Services Property Tax Assessment and Billing Agreement authorized village president to sign the agreement.
Mr. President, we've done this for the last twenty years. Waukesha County, as you know, does all of the tax bills for the Village of Vernon, it's just standard procedure. We don't have it reviewed by the attorney because court counsel will not make any changes to their set agreement, so it's ready.
Is there a motion?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Aye. Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Ordinance two-zero-two-five-dash-oh-four to establish ethics ordinance for the Village of Vernon.
This is, the board saw this last, at the last meeting in regular form and I just put it in ordinance format and it would have to be sent to legal for, legal review. So if you, if you did choose to approve ordinance twenty-five-dash-oh-four, the ethic ordinance, it would be contingent on legal review. And typical legal review is always done of ordinance because it is a law or will become law once it's codified.
We didn't have one in the past, huh?
And every attorney, every auditor for the last seven, eight years have asked if we had an ethics, most municipalities have an ethics ordinance, but we've never had one. But we've always been ethical.
Yeah, kind of. I'm surprised we didn't have one. All right, is there a motion to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-five-dash-oh-four, ethics? Based on legal review?
I'll second one. I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Aye. Opposed, motion passes unanimously.
I have a question, did we do that?
We didn't.
Citizens Bank Cash Management Services Agreement authorized village president to sign the agreement.
And board members, you know, we opened a new account and added trustee Finch, allowing him to look, since he's a check signer, allowing him to look, and also Kelly, she does a lot of the work, she, nobody can do anything in the account, but they can at least review. So that requires a new agreement for the board to approve and then to authorize the president to sign said agreement.
I'll make the motion. I'll second that one.
Motion made by trustee Newman, seconded by trustee Peckah. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Aye. Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Resolution two thousand twenty-five-dash-oh-five, resolution to combine wards and conduct all of two thousand twenty-six voting at the village hall.
Mr. President, this was on the agenda in, you know, just the concept form at the last meeting and was directed by the village board to put this in resolution format as normally has done, so it's ready for your approval.
Is there a motion to approve resolution two thousand twenty-five-dash-oh-five?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Aye. Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Resolution two thousand twenty-five-dash-oh-six, a resolution authorizing staff to sell or donate village obsolete equipment. It was a list of the equipment in the packet.
And we would, you know, if the board authorized this to sell, we would put, you know, detailed information and as I stated, everything would be scrubbed, you know, so that nothing, there's nothing on the hard drives, the monitors. When I say donate, I think nobody's going to want to buy out those keyboards or, you know, I mean, we wouldn't donate anything unless we had, we'd come back to you with something that we couldn't sell, but I, I don't really know what we're going to get for it, but-
Who's detailing the prices?
We usually put it under a bid notice, but with a caveat that the board reserves to write to reject any and all bids when you sell it, because if somebody just-
For each piece of equipment.
Right, so if, I mean, somebody could say, well, I'll buy all six or whatever, but it would be, you know, when it is published for sale, and we'd put it in many places as we could, obviously free places, but we'd always put that disclaimer that the village board reserves the right to reject any and all bids. That way, if you get a bid that you don't feel is appropriate, you don't accept the bid. But they are, they are closed bids, so when people, you know, want to purchase something, they have to put it in a sealed bid.
I don't think we'll get much for it. I mean, I, I don't think we should donate it either, but not unless, you know, we want it, but-
Yeah.
I think we try selling it first and not have our expectations too high.
That's what I would do is, you know, bring it back to the board for your final decision before, you know, but I, we didn't want to put anything out there until, until we've had a chance to discuss it and see what the board wanted to do.
Well, it's not doing us any good sitting in the corner, so I've been getting a few bucks for it.
Yeah, but what am I, I do it.
So are you approving that, that resolution?
I'm taking the first one to do the resolution. I'll second.
Motion made by trustee Newman, seconded by trustee Hurt. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Aye. Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Center Bridge Project.
Board members, I put this on the agenda just in case any, the latest scenario happened, the middle footings of the bridge is something that they were extremely, extremely worried that it was going to collapse, and you saw that Waterford, thank God, opened up their dam, so did Rochester, which doesn't sound like much, but it, it is when, you know, because Vernon, especially in the, this part of, well, and Jeff's, I mean, where there's low spots, it floods significantly. And I've been sending you daily reports, any report I get on the bridge, you know, I make sure that I send it to you guys so that you guys are aware of what's happening, and they're still pleased and they don't think we're going to suffer too much of a setback, but that's what they were really worried about is that center footings. What's wrong, Terry?
I just thought, you know, something varies like plasters and stuff. Do we have insurance?
It's not ours, because that's the first thing I ask.
It's not ours.
It would be Lundar, Lundar is the engineering firm, it would be on Lundar.
Okay.
I did check that right away because of course we're always worried about Vernon. Yeah, so we were fully covered. And then I know President Milligan's just going to talk to you about a finance meeting sometime in September, and that's when we'll talk about financing for the bridge and Center Drive and all that stuff, but I just want to let you know, any report I get always goes to the board so that you can see what's happening on a, on a daily basis. It's probably going to slow down a little bit now because, not going to, it stopped raining, but any report I get, just so you know, you all get that.
Yeah, the river road is almost three feet and it's-
That's a lot.
And it's starting to go down now, so unfortunately it doesn't go down as fast as it comes up.
So there's no action there, Mr. President?
Uh, flooding events for the Village of Vernon the weekend of August ninth, anything else we need to?
Well, just wanted to thank Vic's management for donating the dumpsters for the village, for village residents to put it in, and also wanted to thank Waukesha County for coming out to, nobody called us, just so that you know, when, when Edgewood Avenue overflowed at the Maguano, in fact, you know, the Maguano Fire Chief, he, he saw, he called the county, the county came out and, and put, you know, road closed, and then somebody finally called me, I went out there and then Brett came out and then noticed that all three of those culverts, out of the four, three were completely, completely full of rocks and trees and so there was only one culvert. And the residents were really nice when, when, because I stood and directed traffic and then Brett went and got the, the road cleared, and so we had, then we actually had it closed, and there was no police officers available because you can imagine what they were dealing with. So the fire department again came out and flashed, you know, put their lights on so people wouldn't come through while Brett was cleaning, cleaning it up. And there was only, and the people were so nice while we were working on this, but there was one person, he must have gone past me about fifty miles an hour, and when he, this is before we moved the rocks, boy, when he hit those rocks, you know, I'm trying to tell him to slow down, slow down, and he's like, so, but, and then the guys came out Monday and got it. This is Sunday when we were doing this, and then when the guys came in Monday morning, that's the first thing they worked on, they got all, all the other three that were plugged, they got them all opened up. And the fire department too, my God, the trees that they, you know, that they worked on all night long Saturday night, they usually cut them down and put them off to the side, but those guys, I don't think a lot of fire departments do what our fire department does during a storm, but, you know, wanted to thank them all. And the residents were real happy that the board got the dumpsters in for, you know, for the people that could use that, so. Sound good?
Sounds good. All right, we'll still wait on resolution two thousand thirty-five-dash-oh-four for Joe.
Right.
Uh, moving on to correspondence and announcements. I have nothing really new to say, except I'd like to thank trustee Newman for running the last board meeting in my absence. I watched it on YouTube. Did a good job.
Appreciate it.
Trustee Peckah?
Well, if people have water in their basement and they flooded, I understand the frustrations. I've heard of many communities that have also had sewer backups, and when I came home from church Sunday, I immediately thought of our bridge. I went down and took a look at it, and my first concern was all the equipment parked around there. I asked our UBW guy Tyler to go down and look at the level, and I told him, I said, if your gut instinct is that water's going to arrive, get a hold of breath for caring. And I'd like to say thank you to Tyler for going down and looking at it.
Trustee Bidge?
Keep in mind, it was a good thing to hear that our fire department goes and cut down, helped to wall these trees, so when we have something come up again that they could use more salary to keep their crew running, please keep that in mind.
Trustee Newman?
Um, not interesting for me, I'll say it's a bit for the North Prairie Horizon.
Trustee Hurt?
I just wanted to keep comparing people to, let us know their opinions on the ATV and UTV ordeal going on.
Karen?
Um, I did, I always do a list of everything that I put in the packet for the board members to see, but, you know, once again, one of the, you know, thank you, all the people that helped during the storm, and that really was a big positive for us. Also, anytime I have any type of meeting, I also did send you the meeting minutes from Cardinal Ridge, they're going to be, you're probably going to see a letter, letter of credit request for them to cut the roads and stone them now, and then with, with the intention of the spring, they'll also put sewer and water laterals in, but that's the Village of Maguano's issue because they're going to own all that equip, all the sewer and water laterals and the sewer water issues. We'll have nothing to do with that unless somebody doesn't pay their water or sewer bill, then we'll put it on their taxes, but that's all theirs, but I did, any, any meetings I have with a developer, I'll always send the board members so you can actually read what happens. I hope I don't inundate you with all the meetings, but just want to let you know, everything's going well with that aspect also, and that's all I have, Mr. President.
All right, the treasure, July treasures report was in the packet. Do we have a motion to move that?
Uh, no, it's always in there, I mean, the board, if they want to, can, but I mean, I just, I am just so thankful, we're current, remember when you first came in office and, you know, I mean, you know, Terry does a great job, Kelly and Terry are, but that's all ready, I mean, if you, Jeff, if somebody wants to make a motion, that's absolutely fine.
I think we just, we'll acknowledge you.
You have it.
Add it to the packet and flip it over. We're good. Um, the Vernon Sheriff's Report, that was also in your packet. Do you have anything you'd like to add for us?
Do you guys have any?
Yeah, we're good. Uh, Fire Department Report was in the packet. Pancake and Omelet Breakfast, September fourteenth at Fire Station One from seven-thirty till-
Till noon.
Pancakes and omelet.
What is the bill?
Till noon.
Okay.
But she said eleven-thirty, but I said your signs say noon. He said we're done at eleven-thirty, but it is noon.
All right, that's fine.
The July two thousand twenty-five EMC-dash-EMS Ambulance Service Report, that was in your packet. North Prairie Municipal Court Fiscal Report for July two thousand twenty-four to July two thousand twenty-five, trustee Newman?
Yeah, so this will be short and sweet. Not much has changed for that stretch of time, but we will be meeting next week to go over budgeting for this coming year, so that everybody has, gets a budget for when they're budgeting of the municipality.
And then trustee Newman, you're going to bring that back to the board then, correct, sir?
Correct.
Sounds good.
Sex offender emergency board met on eight-twenty-one. You have a hazardous waste update?
That was in the packet. All, all these things were in the package, yeah.
All right, moving on to finances. Counts payable for August twenty-first. Uh, first batch is in the amount of seventy-nine thousand fifty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents. Are there any questions on that batch?
The only thing in there, they're SIMBots invoices, you know, really hard to read that much of the stuff.
Yeah, they do Xerox start and up or something.
Yeah. Is there a way to get some of this stuff to right side? You know how to get some things sideways? Is there any way to? Yeah, you turn it.
Well, you can turn it yourself.
Quick rotate. I don't know. Okay, you have to hear a quick break.
Because these are really-
Never mind.
But the reason why I do that, it shows back about twenty-five pages.
I won, yeah, I did, yeah. I would make that.
All right, is there a motion to approve batch two thousand twenty-five-oh-eight-twenty-one-A in the amount of seventy-nine thousand fifty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents?
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Aye. Opposed, motion passes unanimously. We had a second batch, two thousand twenty-five-oh-eight-twenty-one-B in the amount of seven thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eleven cents. Any questions on that one?
I'll make the motion on that.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Aye. Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Manual checks, we had two of them in the total amount of one thousand three hundred forty-nine, one thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-one cents.
That's why I forgot that period.
That was the Verizon bill and postage for the newsletter.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Aye. Opposed, motion passes unanimously. We had our two thousand, July of two thousand twenty-five Vernon Financial Report in the packet, as well as the AHC report.
And that one does require a motion, Mr. President?
Well-
ACH report, those are all the, the automatic payments, but the board has to see those and approve them.
That was the amount of one hundred and fifty-four thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirteen cents.
And mainly that's payroll, federal taxes, state taxes, garnishments, retirement.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Aye. Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Village Board Minutes from August seventh. Any corrections? Even though I watched it on YouTube, I'll abstain from voting on it.
Okay.
Okay.
So I wasn't here.
I looked it over, it looks good. I'll make a motion to approve the August seventh, twenty twenty-five Village Board Minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Trustee Newman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Aye. Opposed. Motion passes with one abstention.
Do you want me to try to call Joe, or do you wanna just tail it? See what he comes back and?
Who's calling?
Yeah. Let me read the announcements here.
Oh, oh yeah, Jeff, I'm sorry.
Um, Village Board Meetings, next ones are September fourth and eighteenth at six P M at Village Hall. And September tenth at six P M, we have Plan Commission Meeting. That didn't take too long.
When are we gonna get a, when are we gonna schedule finance meeting next?
Mm-hmm, next board meeting.
We're still waiting. Oh, I was just waiting to hear if we knew if Joe was coming soon, though.
I mean, if he's on his way, it could take a five-minute recess.
Okay.
He's on the way?
Yeah, there are, his lieutenant's calling him now.
He said hello.
Oh, I thought he was calling him.
Maybe he got a call, like he's coming to call.
Well, Joe's not answering. I know you wanted to talk to him about the school bus issue. And you did see that I put the old bond schedule and the new bond schedule?
Both look fine.
Yeah, and, and they have to go to Judge Powers um, before they're, if, if the board would approve the bond schedule, then it's contingent on Judge Powers.
Okay.
Um, reviewing and approving. But I think, I'm almost proud of Towne McGuannago. I was telling the president, it's six hundred dollars if you blow past the school buses with their flashing lights on.
It should be. That should be one of the most expensive ones.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's scary to a bus driver, well, even driving on the road, you see somebody.
Don't pay attention to any of that. Well, yeah.
Let me see if I can text him. Are you gonna make it to the meeting?
Yeah, I'd like to get this approved at least for something going to effect versus the land. But it would be nice to have Joe here to explain the proper procedure, because sometimes those buses, you turn their yellow lights on and don't stop for a long time. And it's like, can you get caught? Do I stop? Do I go, you know, it's, I don't know.
Once their lights go on, I'm stopping.
Joe's on his way. We could ask this officer about.
You said he's on his way now?
Lieutenant, could we ask you a question about um, school bus, school buses when they put their flashing lights out? The board wanted to ask.
It seems like a lot of, this, the few times I've come across, you know, if there's not kids standing out there, you don't know when they're stopping, when they're dropping off. They put their yellow lights on so far back, you don't know where, where we're stopping.
So like, oh, like how far you have to stop?
Well, I mean, you know, you see them putting the yellow lights on, the school bus still keeps coming at you, and you're kinda going slow forward too.
Yeah.
Because you don't know where they're stopping, so it's like, you don't know where you're supposed to stop.
The yellows just go warning, and then it would become a violation when the red lights are flashing and you stop.
There you go.
So lock the brakes up when you see red.
Yeah. So just once it stops, turns out the arms out, the red lights are going.
Okay. Yeah, so the yellow light to the bus for a long time, when they're coming at you sometime, and it's like, where are you?
Oh, here, say, say, bed, a second.
Jeff, he's on his way, guys, do you mind just waiting?
No.
Five-minute recess, can we move on? Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, just take a five-minute recess.
Okay, got it.
All right, five-minute break. We reconvene at six forty, hopefully.
Thank you.
I'll send Skidix.
Looks like we need you in the back of that clock.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
I can hear you, did you log in, once to the, can you get it?
I tried logging in. Now you said I don't have your password, but.
Let me, you know what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna start, I'm gonna start a whole new meeting and send it to you and move, okay?
Do I'm gonna just come, I'll, I'll just come in.
Are you sure?
Yeah, yeah, I can come in, I'll be there in five minutes, is that okay?
Oh, yeah, yeah, just take your time.
Okay.
Technology is great when it works, you know that, guys?
It does for a lot of things.
Shoot, I'm sorry.
Like the mowers too, they're great when they work.
Well, Jeff, Jeff, with your kind of business, I mean, it's like, I think, you know, you have one item breaks down, and then another, and another, you realize you have a mess.
Yeah, it's always interesting.
Yeah. And of course, the parts, the parts are probably in backwards.
No, they've been pretty good now with.
Now that COVID's over, they have.
Yeah. And if my local supplier doesn't have it, Toro's not that far away really good, to the next day usually, so.
I would think Toro is a very good brand of lawn mowers, I'm sure.
They all are. Comes down to, who's gonna give you the best service, because they're all great when they're brand new. When they start needing repairs, who's, who's the best?
Just like our cars.
You're not walking up there. Are you back to work?
No.
Lunch?
I can't wait, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, I go visit Sue all the time now, I just walk up to her house.
Ask her what's for lunch?
Yeah. Where's your grass will walk? Yeah, yeah. We got that drainage, uh, the water easement in the back. Oh, that, it's terrible. Needs to be dredged out, but I think they tried.
Guys are on TV. So don't talk about it.
But there's a lot of stuff in the, the bonds up.
Go, go take a five minutes. I'm trying to reschedule this meeting. Did he answer your questions?
Yep.
Don't forget we get your big one. Oh, you're fine. Joe, you wanna come out to seat up here, or here, wherever you feel more comfortable?
All right, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Did you get a chance to look over the bond schedule here and stuff, or?
I have bond, yeah.
So we increased the.
Everything by a hundred dollars, unless the ones were five hundred, seven fifty, and a thousand, because you just did that in May. But everything else went up a hundred.
Failure to bus, stop for the bus?
You just, I don't think you increased that any more than a hundred, but I can do whatever you guys want. Joe, is that a special, um, is that a statutory, um, not stopping for the bus? Is it, is it under traffic laws?
Yeah, I can, I was just looking at what statute.
So we'll see that one specifically.
What's that? Uh, honestly, most of the time, it's the, school buses have cameras.
Oh, so they can catch.
Yeah. And um.
See a caller number and?
Yeah. Yeah, pause it, fast forward, whatever.
Then you go make contact with us.
Um, so the violation, so that violation's on its owner's liability ticket, which just means that the registered owner gets the ticket. Um, so it's kinda like less of, kinda have to prove less, I guess. It's just kinda saying like, since you're the registered owner of the car, like.
You're responsible.
Yeah.
Wasn't my rules, right?
Right, yeah. So the statute I have is three forty-six point four eight subsection one.
You probably don't have it in our. Sorry, Joe, can you, three forty-six?
Uh, three forty-six point four eight subsection one. And uh, statute is vehicles to stop for school buses displaying flashing lights.
So we would add that, if the board so chooses, add that specifically into the schedule?
That says just flashing like.
Oh.
Say red or yellow.
It says, well, I can read the full, I can read the full subsection of law.
Oh, no, that's fine. I can click.
But it just says, the red, uh, flashing red warning lights are on there, and it says, shall stop the vehicle not less than twenty feet from the bus, and shall remain stopped until the bus resumes motion or the operator extinguishes the flashing red lights.
What's our current fine?
It's not listed, so you can put whatever you want.
I think the tickets I wrote for that one, it's, ours is two hundred and fifty dollars.
For the first offense?
We do two fifty, and maybe two fifty is five hundred.
So, two citations?
No, if, uh, that would be like a state level ticket, right? No, it's not a level ticket. It's still just a traffic offense. I've been writing the ones for Vernon, and it shows that we have it. So I don't see it on the sheet either, that was provided, but when I put it in the system to actually issue the citation, it shows that we do have it.
Well, I'd like to see, does, does Lisa have?
I'm sure she does.
Oh, maybe, God, would you guys mind if I just contacted Lisa? Because I'd like to see what they have. You know, so, is that okay, guys?
Absolutely.
Yeah, because it was only two fifty, we should raise it.
Yeah.
I know, Towne McGuannago's six hundred, first offense.
Really? I know, and there's some cars that do it more than one, so obviously, they're not, they must not care, or they just generally don't know, but it's a little ridiculous.
Exactly.
Double.
Yeah, so Joe, I'll call Lisa tomorrow and see what she's got in her system, because it might be much more detailed than what we have, and that's what we wanna see. At least I would wanna see that.
If you do it more than one time, you should be able to spend a couple of hours.
Oh, yeah, I agree. But um, our clerk, her name's Bobby Joel, and she does the um, traffic stuff, traffic ticket stuff for us, so I can cc her in an email to you too, so you can have her contact.
Oh, that's perfect. Do you mind, Joe?
Yeah, I can do that right after this.
Okay, because that'd be great, because, you know, I'd like to mirror what, what you have, and put, I think the board would too.
Yeah.
Does that sound good, guys?
Yeah.
Do you have a rough stop?
What's that?
Did you have a rough stop, was it a bad one?
Oh, no, they were fine, just two goofballs on motorcycles, like.
You have a lot of goofballs in Vernon.
Hell, yeah, yeah.
There's more to that.
A lot of goofball in the road, period.
Yeah.
Who asked about, did you ask about all the sheriffs? You can ask him about. Did you?
No, I did ask about it.
Who did ask?
Somebody did.
Who was that? Here.
Can you speak up to Jim, so everybody can hear? You're asking a question about all the sher.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but he, yeah, I saw, it's right by the, um, the watering, the Big Bend Water Stone.
Oh, yeah.
Just, just um, east, there's that like apartment complex thing.
Yeah.
And right next to that, or a couple houses away, there's like eight or nine sheriffs walking down the driveway to Big Bend.
Really?
No, I learned if you were a part, I thought I saw one.
Oh, you.
It should've been Vernon's car, but we don't know.
Yeah. No, I haven't heard anything about it. Could be like a search warrant, or like an eviction or something.
Yeah, because they were just walking.
Yeah.
They weren't running.
No, yeah, yeah.
No guns drawn.
Eight people.
Yeah, it was like.
Yeah. Yeah, but no, I haven't heard anything, there's been nothing in the past on that I heard about either. I'm listening, I think you don't.
All right, so you want to table all this until next?
Board meeting, that we get that additional information?
Yeah. Should do it all at the same time.
Joe, is there anything, anything else you want the board to address?
Uh, nothing that comes to mind, no. Again, sorry, again, we, uh.
Again, sorry for being late, there's another call going on.
Don't worry about it.
I'll hold you guys up, I'm sorry.
We gotta, more important things to work on.
Yeah, I know.
We're not so excited.
All right, we'll table that item until the next board meeting.
Thanks, Joe.
Yep.
All right, next, we're gonna go into possible, or go into closed session. I need to, uh, read the notice again or just roll call vote?
Yeah, just, the motion would be as stated by the village president and as printed on the agenda. That would be the motion.
I'll make that motion. Hold on a second.
And then we'll call vote, um, excuse me, President Lloyd?
Aye.
Uh, Trusty Pecker?
Aye.
Trusty Finch?
Aye.
Trusty Newman?
Aye.
Trusty Hurt?
Aye.
Um, Mr. President, note for record that your village board has, um.